We'll wait until we have the recording announcements over. Maybe.
This conference, this conference is no longer being, this conference will now be recorded.
That works.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are meeting virtually on the ancestral lands of the Kalafuean people, and particularly the Champinapu and the Ampinapu bands of the Kalafuea who signed a series of historical treaties here in the Leuva Valley but then were subsequently removed to reserves in the coast range, and still are with us today as descendants now members of the Soletz and the Grand Lawn Confederated Tribes. Thank you. I'm Zan Ojero, Commissioner and Chair. Pass it on to Nancy. Nancy Wyans, Commissioner?
I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Chair of the Hoover County Administration.
Vance Grohman, County Council.
Aleah Navo, Board of Commissioner staff.
Sohan Edi, I Chumasiya, Coordinator and Chief Leader for this.
Good morning, Kate Porsha, Corralsman, County Economic Development Office.
Teresa Farley, Board of Staff.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department.
April Holland.
Secretary of Public Health and Social Security.
April Holland, Health Department.
Kelly Losi, Health Department.
Prime Minister of South Dakota.
Jen Ambule, Financial Services.
And I think that picks up just about everyone. You know that Erica is behind the scenes. Good morning, Erica.
Actually, it's Jonavie Stokes this morning.
Okay.
Commissioner, I should make you aware of a little change. Erica is not behind the scenes this morning. Jonavie Stokes is behind the scenes this morning. So if you call out for Erica, she will not respond, but if you call out for Jonavie, she should respond. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Heads up and good morning, Jonavie.
Good morning, Zan.
Okay. Are there any announcements this morning? Any comments from the public? Okay. Next, we will review and approve the agenda. We will be having an executive session under cover this morning. So Commissioners will remain after all the rest of folks are cleared out of our virtual rooms to engage in a particular session. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. As a reminder. I do. All of David's signature with an "aye"? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Moving on into our work discussion, the first item of business is an update from our Emergency Operations and Departmental Operations Center, beginning with Brian Lee, which is management.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. So quick update here. We are focused on developing our operational plans for vaccine surge beginning next week and going obviously through April and May. The main focus is going to be accommodating our vulnerable population, targeting specific populations, and any other ramp up in our mass vaccination event, as well as some of our role sites. So all across the board, we're sort of ramping things up. With that connection, we are still working on our staffing pattern. It's going to be a little bit challenging just with the ramp up and the dynamics and how many folks we need to cover down on each role and fight off the exhaustion and burnout. So that's a huge, huge focus for us, eats up a lot of our time. And the hardest part is, of course, getting the right people in the right spots with the right skill sets. So again, a big focus for us here in EOC. All the clinic, full clinic updates to April, but we are going to have clinics this week, nine to five, Thursday and Friday. And again, focusing on our plans moving forward for all of our vaccine surge beginning at the start of next week. End of report.
Brian? I said, this, that, I know a lot of our staff is volunteering for the vaccination events. Are we casting a wider net than that to get the community involvement and be able to volunteer and help people?
Oh, yes. So in terms of our volunteer pools, right now, our shortlist is of 900 people that we regularly send out any volunteer opportunities we have out to, and there's plenty more that are ready and willing but have not yet volunteered with us. So we have a huge volunteer pool. The hardest part right now with that is being able to successfully and adequately manage that volunteer pool. And then a lot of times, we actually get folks who are a little frustrated that there weren't more volunteer opportunities available or slots available to volunteer. So it's actually a really good problem to have, which is part of our staffing model. But we have tons of volunteer opportunities for folks and a big volunteer pool.
Well, that's great. More vaccine, more getable people, engage. So thank you.
One more question, Brian. Has the EOC moved over to the Conference Street from Resha? Are you now in LaSalle?
Yes, yes, we moved. We got kind of settled in here, which began a big nod to OSU as a partner. It was really amazing they operated up this facility for us. It's definitely smaller and space-wise than our Christchurch location, but we got moved in, settled, and have everyone sit down as well and are operating out of here now. So in all honesty, the move went really smooth. We didn't hit any major snags of any kinds. Everything sort of worked out, which is, I think, rare for most of these sort of things.
That sounds extremely unusual, especially, and I'm glad that the telecommunications stuff worked out really well and smoothly in the move, too. Okay. I believe we are ready to move on. So next up, we have April Holland and Suzanne Hoffman.
Good morning, everyone. This is April. Yes, I'm joining you from the LaSalle Stewart Center here in one of the art corners, and we're happy to have this space. I'm happy to provide a summary of recent COVID vaccine planning and administration efforts here in Benton County. I've got to give my usual disclaimer on all of our planning efforts. All of it's dependent upon availability of vaccine, which will be increasing. At this point, many more people are still eligible for vaccine than there are doses available. So as of today, I don't know if you follow the numbers like I do, but about 866,000 people in Oregon have received at least one dose of vaccine. It's about 20% of the total population. Here in Benton County, about 23,000 have had at least one dose, and that's about 24% of the population. Those are big jumps from when I last reported to you. Our first mass clinic at Research Stadium was on January 26th. This week's clinics will be on Thursday and Friday from nine to five, as Brian said, and those will include 2,000 doses each day. That's first and second doses, and that's the upper limit of our daily capacity for an eight-hour clinic. So we're maxing out Thursday and Friday. This is great news. This will be our seventh week of mass clinics, and to date, in partnership with Samaritan Health Services and OSU, we've administered through those clinics about 15,400 doses. That's first and second doses. Samaritan separately has administered about 9,000, and in total, we've administered about 27,000 doses here in Benton County. The federal and state pharmacy programs continue to pump out some additional doses into the community. I reported a couple weeks ago there are three Safeway pharmacies. We're getting 100 doses each. We can add to that 100 doses for Paloma Family Pharmacy and 100 each to each of the two Bymark pharmacies. So we've got 600 more doses coming in every week to those partners. We have additional pharmacies waiting in the wings that include Walmart and Rite Aid, among others. Now for the news we've been waiting for. We are expecting a big increase in vaccines that will begin to ramp up next week. You've probably heard President Biden's message to the nation where he directed states to make all adults eligible starting May first. Governor Brown let us know that we'll need a lot more vaccine to make this happen. But even prior to the president's message, we learned from Oregon Health Authority that more vaccine will be on the way. This will mean more vaccine days for the mass clinic at Research, more vaccines to pharmacies and enrolled providers, and importantly, focused small clinics targeted specifically to vaccinate vulnerable populations. We're so excited for this. We've been working hard to expand staff, to prepare for the scalable small mobile clinics, and to determine allocations to those enrolled providers. This, colleagues, is the moment we've been waiting for. It's a game changer that will allow us to quickly vaccinate much of the population in a short time and bring us closer to community immunity. As we ramp up vaccination, we'll also expect to tip the balance away from high demand. So we need to anticipate and move forward with work on vaccine confidence and integrate those efforts into our outreach, particularly into vulnerable communities. Our work is not done, and we are not yet out of the woods. Cases, hospitalizations, and deaths continue here and across the nation. There are variants of concern that may become more of a problem across the nation. However, hope is here. We have three vaccines that provide incredible protection against death and hospitalization. Since mid-December, almost a quarter of our county residents have received vaccination. Our crude, very crude projections, which are all we have to work with currently, give us hope that we could have first vaccines for all eligible, age-eligible persons delivered by the end of June. Being pretty conservative. We really have an incredible opportunity, and we'll have the vaccine to get there. I'm smiling under my mask, by the way. My plea to all is this: Please stay the course. Continue to wear your masks, distance, and avoid travel if possible. Get vaccinated with any vaccine you're offered as soon as you're eligible and can get an appointment. Follow CDC and local guidance when you're fully vaccinated. And overall, please, please remain vigilant, and we may be able to realize Joe Biden's vision of having a family barbecue on Independence Day. Thank you. That's all I have today.
Thank you, April. Other questions for April Holland or Suzanne? I'm sorry, I had to miss part of that. My computer kicked me out, so it sounds like we're moving in the right direction. I'll ask you other questions later because I'm not sure. You probably answered everything that I would have asked. May comments from Joe? Hearing none, we will move on to Aleah and the Jicks.
Good morning. Okay, so I have set up an update for you all today. I was hoping to have numbers ready for you, but I just wasn't able to get them pulled together in time. Kind of looking backwards, I wanted to make you aware that last Friday was our first evening clinic over at Research Stadium. This has been something that the community has been asking for in terms of clinics that's outside of 8 to 5 for quite some time. So it was really exciting that we now have the ability to shift our hours and provide that 5 to 7 p.m. time period. I will say, one of the benefits of being at LaSalle is that it's cool being across the street and seeing the line of folks coming to Research. You can see them all day on Friday, but I will say, at that 5 p.m. hour between 3:00 and 6:00, it was so, so busy. And so I personally was really thrilled to see the community engaging with that after-hours 5 to 7 p.m. club on Friday. The other piece that I wanted to just make you all aware as well is that our team, in my opinion, really successfully navigated the operation into the evening. So one thing in particular that I was concerned about was lighting and safety. It is a really far walk from the concourse out to the parking lot, and big kudos to Rick Posley, who's the site director over at Research last week. He had it really well lit, had the whole thing. It was seamless. It was really, really well done. And so, yeah, just wanted to provide that positive report back to you all from being there last Friday night. So in addition to that, last week, one of our major messages that we needed to get out there is unfortunately that there is a scam that is occurring. Members of our community are receiving phone calls and/or text messages from Misty at the fairground. And I was really happy to say we've gotten a lot of coverage over this, and so I think that we were hopefully able to nip, well, maybe we weren't able to nip it in the bud, but we were able to respond very quickly. We just heard about the scam last Friday, actually Thursday and Friday at last week's clinic, so two weeks ago. I'm sorry. So that was good. As Brian mentioned, or maybe Commissioner Ojero brought up, we moved last week. It was a bit challenging to get a cadence back after moving. Some of us have been at that 4,500 facility for close to a year, 10 months, and so, you know, it took a little bit. But I think now we're getting settled in, we're going to find our rhythm over here at LaSalle, and so that'll be great. Another really great success that I want to make you all aware of is that I have worked, and the team has worked diligently to complete some cross-training, so we now actually have two functional teams. Yes, they are all the same people on two different teams, however, you know, not all roles are as stressful in the Jicks, and so the rotation is in and out of that lead PIO, media relations spot. So I'm really pleased to say that Kelly Losi and Alyssa Rash are doing a great job swapping back and forth on there. Kelly is getting her sea legs under her out in the field, and so that's going well. So moving into this week, I think one of my biggest updates is that yesterday we got on four new employees, CSRs, into our phone bank. And so yesterday, they initiated their onboarding. Today, they're going to finish up their municipal deupstaging and some other policies we needed to review. By tomorrow, we are going to come back to capacity in the phone bank. So I'm elated to give that report that we got those recruitment accomplished prior to the surge. Another really great update for this week, too, is that I will be moving forward with the second round of interviews for the communications coordinator position. It is an incredibly competitive pool. I'm pretty excited. So I will be moving forward with those interviews tomorrow. We are working very hard right now to get an upgrade to our underlying survey functionality. One of the limitations, well, it's not a limitation, but one of the constraints, like everything that we're working with is budget. And so with our survey, the current plan that we are on does not really take into account that we have over 26,000 responses on a single survey. Our plan is for much lower than that. If you want to think about it like a cell phone plan, we had a limited number of data. We've gone over our data by like 2,500%. And so this has been a licensing issue that we've been looking at for the last handful of weeks. We've engaged the IT department, we have engaged health departments, emergency services. We've done some product review, and we are hoping to execute a contract this week, which will allow us to have better cost basings, I would say, around this tool, as well as the ability to eliminate some of the manual processes that we're completing on a daily basis, at least Monday through Friday. So that is going to be a big project that I'm hoping to bring to completion, and then as soon as we get that contract signed, we need to turn around and do a heavy lift when it comes to technical work for updating the survey for the next eligibility group. The good news is that we already have, the upgrade to the survey design. So as soon as we can move forward with this next level of licensing, we should be able to advance. Of course, that's a lot of shoulds, coulds, and woulds, but we have a Plan B, and we will continue to work diligently and get there eventually. I think that's all I had. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I wanted to interject on the survey issue. I know that in addition to it being cumbersome and being oversubscribed and all of the other challenges that we've had with the particular tool, but there have been some ADA issues as well, Americans with Disability Act. I'm assuming that that was one of the criteria for the new platform, was that the faulty forms that were developed could be compliant with Americans with Disability Act as well?
Yes, that's absolutely important. Criteria is part of our consideration.
Okay. And so I'm looking forward to that. That's fabulous news. And the other question I have that's related is, will this particular software platform also help us beyond the vaccination surge, beyond this particular usage and into our other day-to-day service functionality across the organization?
It would be something that at the time of this contract ended, we would want our IT department to perform an analysis, basically. So we have currently a personal user account with Survey Monkey. We share that the cross organization, and this works for the most part. I'm getting into the weeds a little bit. Moving into the enterprise Survey Monkey account goes into a different model for pricing. The model is then based upon submissions, based on the submissions we've received thus far, and then extrapolating out that we receive about 3,000 submissions a week on a low week. That is likely that that product would cost upwards of $70,000 if we were to go that way. One of the other vendors' products, base pricing off of overall website traffic, and so that is one of the pricing considerations that we took into account. I don't know if that answered your question directly.
What I'm getting from that is that right now, we have a very, very, very high volume of usage because of particular application that we are dealing with. But when it comes to routine business, after we finish the vaccine surge, we will have a different volume of business, different structure, and so we may need a different vendor. And so, okay, I understood that there are a lot of factors involved. I'm just constantly wondering where we can tune up, improve our use of online tools to do our routine business, recognizing that it will never be sufficient because of the fact that we also have a large population of over 65-year-olds and younger people who don't have access to the tools or the know-how to engage with them. And in a mode where we're going to have to have multiple modes of operation for a while, so we won't really see the efficiencies of shifting to more online.
Yeah, yeah. I could really go off on a tangent on what we could use this tour in the future, but I won't. I'll spare us. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see where we're at in the year, frankly, and, you know, our experience with this survey tool and, you know, maybe just looking at our organization and how often we do survey and, you know, all of those factors. Commissioner Malone, I think I saw your hand tick up.
Yeah, with April's report there about an increase in vaccine coming fairly soon, and there's a tipping point somewhere where it goes from too much for the supply we have to at least sufficient supply, if not, the question is, how are we? The question is, how are we going to change our, we're going to contact people out there that haven't been vaccinated, and so we can get through the population as quickly as possible to get everybody vaccinated that we can.
Yeah, I think that that is an important consideration, Commissioner. To be honest with you, we haven't necessarily looked at that perspective from a message. What we've, to be honest, what we've really been looking at is vaccine confidence and trying to develop a communication strategy around that. That's kind of the new way of saying vaccine hesitant, in a positive frame, on vaccine hesitant, the vaccine confidence. So, that's primarily where we've been focusing in terms of operations, when we've been looking at planning and carrying out our rural clinics, as well as some of our hopes to do mobile clinics. What I will say though, Commissioner, is it's possible right now, we're seeing some of that shift in the supply and the demand. In our morning briefing this morning, we think that this is maybe the first week that we haven't exhausted all of our vaccine slots in a matter of minutes or hours. So, it'll be interesting to see next week, oh, I'm sorry, in two weeks, on the 29th, as the guidance opens and larger groups become eligible, if that supply and demand quickly switches back to where we were at. But at least for right now, this week and potentially even next week, that's a positive, I would say. And so, we're going to certainly sweep through all of our lists without all of those communications, get as many folks as we possibly can that are eligible.
Great, thank you.
All right, that was the end of my report, unless there are any other questions.
Thank you, much appreciated. I'm glad to hear that the staffing, the hiring is going well and that we're starting to be able to address that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm really looking forward to it. Joe, was that a goodbye, or was that a "I have something"?
Actually, once you're done, I would just like to interject real quick, some more information for Commissioners.
Yep, I'm done.
Go for it, Joe, thank you, Lilia.
Thanks, Lilia. Commissioners, I did want to interject, in case you haven't seen that email that I sent out to you last night, just giving you a heads up regarding additional staffing needs. And if you haven't seen that email, please do refer to it. As April had mentioned, we continue to be challenged with not having enough staffing. And so, HR and our EOC and Health Department are working closely at coordinating additional needs for the upcoming vaccine clinics. So, stay tuned, we'll keep you abreast of it. I do know that next week, we have an information sharing meeting next Tuesday, and so I will be updating you more at that point, if not before. Just wanted you to know that will likely be accommodation of utilizing additional county employees, as well as potential new hires, in a second wave, in order to prepare for the surge.
So, what's happening?
Well, I'm not sure the exact date, but we're getting perilously close to our one year anniversary for the EOC. And thank the people that, especially that they were there in the beginning and have continued this marathon effort for a full year.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I would like to see if Suzanne Hoffman has any additional information she might share according to Kate.
Thank you, no, no additional information.
Kate Porsha, economic side of the picture.
Good morning, Commissioners, nice to see everybody today. I just have a handful of brief updates that I wanted to share with you. First of all, as I'm sure you can imagine, our businesses are thrilled at the opportunity to move from extreme down to high and reopen at least to some extent. It's really been this ray of hope, I think, for folks. And so, I know we don't say it enough, but thank you to your entire team on the public health side, volunteers, everybody who's working so hard to get folks vaccinated and to get the information out. We're really grateful, it's making a huge, huge difference. I did want to let you know of three programs that are open right now. I'll give you a little bit of details about that in case you're hearing any chatter or questions. One of the biggies is Business Organ has opened their commercial rent relief program. It is open until the 21st of May for folks to apply. And it basically, it's going to be a lottery system though. So, I suspect like many of these programs, it's going to be oversubscribed, we're going to have way more folks applying that will be recipients. I think for the majority, vast majority of folks, the applications are going very smoothly. But one of the caveats to this program is it's actually the landlords who have to apply, not the tenants. And we are privy to at least one case where a business would very much like their landlord to apply, they're behind on their rent, and yet we have a landlord who is refusing to apply. So, we're working with that business, we're working with Business Organ to see if there's anything they can do. I don't know that there is at this point, but I think perhaps it highlights an opportunity to have Business Organ look at the structure of this program, maybe if they're going to do a future round of this. The other challenge with this program, and this other item is being canceled through communications we're having with Governor's Office, but then also legislatively, Heather let me know, there was a lot of chatter this morning in one of the hearings, is that the commercial eviction moratorium has actually ended. And the challenge is, is that Business Organ set up this program, but the lotteries aren't going to be run until we get to a point where commercial landlords are able to evict their tenants. So, there's a gap there. And so, there's a lot of chatter going on about the potential of extending the commercial eviction moratorium through September 30th. So, we're watching that very closely, we're very keen to see that go into place because we think it would give businesses a little more coverage through this time when Business Organ is getting these funding programs out the door. The other item I wanted to mention, I think as we had told you, our team has applied for, and put in our order for the second round of personal protective equipment for businesses. We've taken over the Madison Avenue meeting room, and have everything stored in there. And Heather and Catherine have set up a really slick contactless pickup where businesses can come in, get what they need. So, that order is in, we don't yet have a timing on getting those items, but you know, last time it was seven pallets of items, which we still have some of. For this one, we had a real good feel that businesses were really needing gloves, hand sanitizing wipes, some other items. So, Heather was able to customize the order to what we need. And some good news, maybe more on the city side than for you guys, but we will be able to at least get about $4,000 back for admin fees for the time that staff is taking to do this PPE distribution for businesses. So, that's very positive. Finally, I want to let folks know, and anybody who's watching, the city's CDDG program for businesses who employ low to moderate income employees is now open. Folks can apply through community lending works. And I think as you all know, the county, with the help now of Rachel Maddox Hughes, is working to set up your program. We weren't able to do them exactly concurrently. However, we have set up a waiting list, so if there are county folks who care about this, they're able to kind of sign up and at least get in the queue. So, when we do launch the county program, we'll know to contact them right away. And Heather let me know, we've already had, I think, four or five folks express interest in that. So, I think that waiting list was a very good idea. So, that is the summary of my report on this fine Tuesday, which I think, Commissioner Malone, to your point, I mark this as the one-year anniversary, at least at 1/19. It was our last day in City Hall. So, happy COVID one-year anniversary, I suppose, to everyone, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have today.
Thank you, Kate. I know that one of the major topics of conversation is the American Rescue Plan and the dollars that are coming to Corvallis, Benton County, and to our small cities, run that stimulus bill. So, one of the things that I would love to talk about more is more collaboration about how we use those dollars across states so that we can do that as strategically as possible. And those conversations are just starting to be, starting up. I know we don't have any guidance from the federal treasury yet on how many funds can be used. So, we know the big buckets, but we don't know much about what can be done within those categories. So, I think that over the next few weeks, looking forward to having those conversations.
I think that's an excellent idea, and it may be worse reaching out, at least, you know, on the economic development side of the House. And I, you know, I don't know if it's possible that Joe and maybe Mary Ottley, you guys are already planning to do this, but I think coordinating the efforts, to your point, Commissioner Ojero, that is a really excellent idea. And again, this notion of avoiding duplication, we can all do more if we're coordinated and kind of rowing in the same direction. So, I'm happy to help facilitate or bring folks together however we can for the economic development programs that might go into place.
Excellent, thank you. Are there other questions for Kate?
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Kate. Really appreciate all that you and your office are doing. And the fact that we're doing it as a team across the city and county has made it a lot easier for all of our businesses. So, thank you. Moving onward, the next on the agenda is Debbie Parsons, and I think, yes. So, Debbie, do you have a report for us of finances, or was Jen going to weave that into the next business item?
Nope, that's me, good morning. I am actually on the phone because when we talked, when y'all talked about the move, this is my first day back here at the EOC. Since the move, my telecommunications are not working, so I am not on my computer at the moment. So, our total expenses so far are $676,000. That being said, 600,000 of that is our personnel. We also know that it's going to take a nice big turn up with our new staffing beyond that. So, right now, that's 76, roughly $76,000 in direct costs. We have two things, one, Lilia spoke about, the software, which should cost us about $50,000. And also, we just took possession of the six reader boards, the electronic reader boards, and that bill will be about $80,000. So, we've got another $130,000 that we have spent. The primary costs that have come out of this effort really are Dr. Thompson's time and, excuse me, printing. Other than that, it's been really rather minimal costs for the entire vaccination process, which is pretty amazing considering how many people we vaccinated. So, that's about all I have to report, unless there are questions.
Are there questions for Debbie? Joe has a question.
Sure.
Good morning, Debbie. Just clarification, if I remember correctly, the dollars that you have shared this morning, those are dollars that we have spent since which time we began this most recent EOC effort back in?
January.
Correct, since January 13th.
Great, thank you. So, these are basically post-CARES Act dollars?
That's exactly right, post-CARES Act dollars.
Okay, thank you, that's, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, and just for clarification, the chance contracts that we have is not actually included in those costs, those are actually being paid right now out of public health dollars.
Oh, okay, excellent. Yeah, that's FEMA prepaid, correct?
Yes, well, actually, no. The public health dollars that we got for the public health grant specifically is actually paying for it. FEMA did pre-authorize it if we wanted to get funding for it from FEMA, but we are working to spend down those public health dollars before they expire in June.
Got it, thank you, that's a good problem to have.
Yes, it is.
Okay, are there any other questions for Debbie on the finance side? Thank you for helping us out with the EOC on top of everything else you're doing.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure. I hope you all have a great afternoon.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay, with that, we're moving on to our next item of business, 4.3, which is the third quarter biennium financial and capital improvement project report by Jen Ambul from Finance.
Good morning, Commissioners. Every, good morning again. Every biennium quarter, which is approximately six months, a summary status of the county budget and actual performance is reviewed. And then, addition to this financial review, we'd like to give a brief update on capital improvement projects and the standing of where we are at that time. However, due to being in the middle of building the upcoming biennium budget, we are only providing a abbreviated version of these reports simply because we felt it was important to give you the information that you need, but did not have time to complete the full-blown report as you would normally see. So, within this, you will find the appropriation monitor for quarter three of the 1921 biennium. And this report provides a broad overview of appropriation by fund and by program. And the actual expenditures are reported through quarter three, which is 12/31/2020. And given this, it should therefore be approximately 75% of the biennium budget. There were seven fund-program combinations that are over the 75% threshold. In the appropriation monitor, they were highlighted red for your ease of use. And I'm going to just give a quick summary of the status of those seven items. The first one was, excuse me, the general fund community services program. This was primarily driven by payments of budgeted one-time expenditures. We received additional COVID funds that were not originally in the budget, and they were passed back to, I believe it was the Oregon Business Association for that grant funding pool to be reallocated again in the future round. We will be including this item in the upcoming supplemental budget, so it will no longer be over the tentative threshold of appropriation. Within the general fund, the cultural and educational program is at 75.5%, so barely over the threshold, this is not a concern. It's the payments to the historical society, and it's actually on track. The local option levy fund in the general government program, there were refund interest payments that were not in the original budget. This item will also be included in the supplemental budget to correct this issue. The building development reserve fund, capital improvement program, is not a concern. While it is a high appropriation status at 96.9%, there should no longer be any funds or expenditures in this fund program. And then, the employee benefit trust fund, the general government program, there were higher-than-anticipated medical claims, and we will be including this item in the supplemental budget. The revenue is there to back that, so it won't be an issue. And then, in the trust fund, under the cultural and educational program, the Benton Cultural Trust received an expanded COVID funding. So, we will also be including this item in the supplemental budget, so we will be increasing the appropriation and the corresponding revenue. And then, the last... And then the last trigger was the Tax-Titled Land Fund Trust Program. This was a senior deferral payout on Blodgett property, and it will be included in the upcoming supplemental budget to correct the issue. Do you have any questions on just the appropriation side of things at this point?
And Nancy, after.
Jen, I appreciate the bright grid highlights there. I was wondering, are there funds that, where we haven't spent very much, where we should have, or maybe they get, they get green highlights or?
There can be for certain. Previously, we did kind of have a yellow-red combination, but the yellow was triggering things that were only at approximately 70%. I think we could discuss setting a threshold of a percentage that triggers something, so it would be like maybe 50%. Or we could look at that going forward completely.
Okay, and if it ended up being 25 items, then maybe change the trigger or knock out some of them where, where there really isn't anything to discuss. But I see some low numbers and wondering, well, is that a good thing, or what's the reason, you know, what's the detail behind those numbers, so?
It could most definitely be a couple things, either a very good reason in just sticking within their revenue stream, or on the flip side of that, it could be a situation where it triggers the notice that people are over-budgeting, and so their expenditures aren't in line with their budget. It could be primarily those two things, but we can definitely look at revising that going forward. I think I'm pretty open and clear to always tweaking these reports to give you what you want rather than just extra information.
I would think that the other potential causes here could be COVID itself, just underspending because fear has been so anomalous in a lot of ways. So, it's useful. I like the idea, Pat, of also flagging some of those dramatic underspends just to make sure that we don't have some problems occurring in the other direction. Commissioner Wise?
Thank you, yes. For the local option levy, the refund interest not in original budget, can you explain about that more?
I wish Mary were on simply because I don't know a lot about the tax side of the House, but my understanding is there are refund payments on interest amounts that we pay back out. I would say that once we are done here, I can talk to Mary, Commissioner, and get you a better definition, simply because I don't like to spitball off the cuff, and I'm not 100% certain. I do know that it's not something that we normally budget for, but in this case, it was hitting the local option fund this go-round, and it just, we didn't have the capacity for it in the appropriation.
Okay, sure, yeah, that'd be great to get a little more information on that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, once you have that information that you'll just email, I'll all three of the Commissioners with the topics, I mean, that's correct.
I most certainly will do that. If there are no further questions on that, I'm just going to move on to the second attachment in your packet, which would be a summary of the capital improvement projects that have requested funding from general fund pool dollars. This document does provide the revised amounts of the general fund dollars for each project, and the expenditures also are through 12/31/20. At the end of quarter three, approximately 37% of the revised budget has been expended on those projects, and there is an allocation balance remaining of 1.165 million approximately. Again, due to time constraints, we chose to focus on just anything that pulls from the general fund and that pooling dollars. Do you have any specific questions on any of the projects, or is there any other information that I can get to you that you would like to know?
Okay.
Yeah, on that remaining allocation, we've got, well, six months according to this budget, or three months, three and a half months according to calendar. Are some of those projects going to take place in this last few months of the biennium?
I will definitely take a look at that. Like, like I said, you know, we do unfortunately have the lag before we get the time to come to you and prevent this information, so a lot has already changed, I'm sure. But I can certainly check in with those departments and verify that those projects are going to be touched the remainder of this biennium.
I can see that, you know, the Fairgrounds projects, for instance, some of those are obvious in proceeding, like the kitchen remodel, so those numbers will go up. And I think most of the others, from what I can tell, are looking like they're not going to go too much of anywhere unless we have some expenditures in public works prior to the work, as the work season ramps up.
Correct. I think that might be where we would see some increase, and then also checking. I know that on the second page, there were a small list of projects that were also just reserved until the plans came through in order to proceed. And I know that Lynn has started, I believe, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, because she's on here, with the Bell Fountain play structure. She had mentioned that one and that we were going to, I think, receive some funding, if I remember correctly. Lynn, is that right?
Yes, we received a grant for 34,000. We just got notified about a week ago on that. So, but we have already done the contract with Game Time, so we're moving forward to have that project finished by June 30th, the playground at Bell Fountain. So, I just reached out to Mary last week to advise her about the grant, so we can make sure to incorporate that into the, into the funding.
I'm glad that was not a dream, because I very much remember that email, but sometimes weird things happen. You dream about work, but I?
Oh, you're right on it, Jen.
Thank you, Lynn. And then I don't know, the only other one, Lynn, if you don't mind, since you're on here, and I feel bad putting you on the spot, is there going to be any progress on the North Albany Park final design? Because I think that's the other one under the original parks list of projects.
North Albany is just a survey through the engineering department, right?
The, that I do not know.
Right, because the other is the bathroom repair, and that's covered by insurance. So, I will touch base with Laurel. I know I had a meeting with Laurel and Lori right before Lori retired, that, and I think Laurel's department's moving forward on that survey. So, I will follow up and get an update on that project and where they're at.
Thank you. And then I would believe that the website redesign is being pushed out to the following biennium and is now coming back to the Capital Improvement Committee. The assessment's Cama Cloud is already at close to 94% expended, so that would get wrapped up. And then the, I know the law enforcement projects are also approximately at 100%. So, there's just a few projects still ongoing, primarily in NAP. I'm going to call, have to get used to that, calling it NAP. Previously, there are projects that were going on in parks and projects that were going on in the fair. Those are the big ones, and then checking in with Laurel and Gary on those projects for public works.
Thank you. Are there questions from Commissioner Looney, Commissioner Wise?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Have a great afternoon, everyone.
Light quiet. Okay, we will now move on to item number 4.3, Discussion of Forest Resource Stewardship Plan and Associated Plan Addendum. We have Lynn McKee with us, and Adam Stevens is going to join us as well. I think I just saw him in the conference room. Let me check, he should be logging in, hold on. Okay, Joe May has gone to call him too. He just slipped off the camera. Realized I needed to add to the camera because otherwise it sounded kind of rude. Oh, thank you, here's Adam.
Good morning.
Good morning, Adam.
Am I up?
You are up. We are.
Perfect.
Four minutes early.
Perfect. Well, good morning to the Commissioners and everyone else. My name's Adam Stevens. I'm the Benton County Natural Resources Coordinator for Benton County Natural Areas, Parks, and Events Department, and here this morning to provide the final plan for review and proposed adoption for implementation for the Forest Resource Stewardship Plan update. This is the third 10-year plan update that Benton County has led with support from a forestry consultant. And this year, we completed a pretty robust and significant update, building on some of the successes and lessons learned from the past. And I'm going to walk us all through that, and this is the first time, I think, that I've virtually presented. So, do we get to have screen sharing? If, okay, perfect. So, before I do that and provide the presentation, I just wanted to recap what we have completed over the last year, which again is, is pretty extensive, especially given some of the adversity we all faced over the last year. So, starting in January 2020, we completed our first public meeting with board commissioners and our Natural Areas and Parks Advisory Board. That was really the first public notification of the 10-year plan update. We also had a project kickoff in January and led a tour of Bazell Memorial Forest, which is a significant part of the stewardship plan. We held advisory board meetings throughout 2020 and really enlisted the support of the advisory board and, you know, the community, knowledgeable community members we have when it comes to our local forests and environment, on how we updated the, or how we would update the methodology and the goals of the plan. You know, to the best of our ability, throughout the project, we were providing the press releases to the board's office, email updates. We had a website presence. We had the Facebook presence, you know, throughout the plan period to provide updates on where we were at, and completed a RFP release, public notification for the request for proposals to, again, get a forestry or natural resources contractor's support for the plan update. And even with the mega fighters and the adversity we faced with some of the shutdowns, we were able to work with Trout Mountain to complete the field data collection over later spring through summer, and then work with Trout Mountain to, you know, update the plan, using all the new methodology and information that I'll, that I'll cover, and providing check-ins along the way with the board's office, which are noted in the packet, and completing virtual public meetings in, in January, and providing that for folks on the website, so it's a YouTube video. Also completed, you know, direct outreach to the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron and Celeste. That's a priority for us, not only as a department, but also under the Forest Stewardship Council, FSC, Sustainable Forest Certification, which we're continuing with. So, sort of the highlights is all the great work we've been able to do, and unless there's questions just after that, I can jump into some of the slides and provide some more information before we have a discussion, or if you just want to, you know, ask questions as they pop up, that's fine with me.
Any questions at this point? Okay, we're ready to move on.
All right, thanks for the screen share. See here, can everyone see this? It should say Benton County Forest Resource Stewardship Plan update, shows a map. Is that all showing up on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
You could enlarge its task a little bit, but other than that, it looks good.
Let's see, how would I enlarge it? Let's do this. Uh, sorry, Commissioner, did you mean the map or the entire screen?
I don't think, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure you can enlarge the entire screen. I think that's it, but it looks good. We create it.
Thank you. So, just so we're all on the same page, the stewardship plan over the years has focused on three properties that our department manages. We have the Fit and Green Natural Area, Bazell Memorial Forest, and Fort Hoskins Historic Park. So, these are the, the priorities for several reasons, but, you know, predominantly it's just that those are the major forest properties. Obviously, I oversee and the department works in smaller remnant forest locations throughout the county, but these are the major forested properties. So, since 2010, really the overarching objectives are for wildlife, biodiversity, promoting those habitats, showing that, you know, we can have active management, you know, for restoration and conservation and forest health, while also supporting the ongoing revenue needs for the department, specifically at, you know, the park level and, you know, the maintenance that's required at each one of those locations for trails and other assets. We, we obviously are, as I mentioned, focused on sustainable forestry and have held the FSC, which is really the highest standard certification, third-party certification, you know, for, I guess, we're going on nearly 21 years now, if, if not a little bit longer, depending on the project. So, we have, you know, a finning that occurs for Douglas fir, stands that has been occurring, so completing those finnings in a sustainable, you know, ecologically beneficial way. Each one of these properties sort of has its own flavor, if you will, of, of management, you know, based on the focus of, of what you know, based on the focus of, of what, you know, the original deeds were, what the original management plans were, what the ongoing public uses and, and, you know, public stewardship goals are. So, those all informed and have informed the plan updates, while also, again, keeping up with the, you know, will of the public and balancing those with our public stewardship So, you know, we had several updates during this, this plan period. We had different drafts that were provided by our consultants with input from staff and from the advisory board, with the final edits being completed and shared with the public for a public review draft after the January 13th public meeting. So, so there was, you know, over a month for, for public review. It was great during the initial, you know, RFP process to engage the community. We had a diverse group, as you can see here, of what we called our evaluation team members who provided input on the request for proposals and also scored and ranked these proposals, which was obviously very helpful for our department to have that community support and knowledgeable, on, you know, knowledgeable community members on wildlife, forestry, forest ecology, you know, private forestry and public forestry management. So, yeah, a lot has changed as far as technology. We were really fortunate, I mean, timing-wise, in a lot of ways, other than what I mentioned around the, the delays we experienced. But we had, you know, July 2020 imagery completed that Benton County GIS Steering Committee paid for. So, I mean, we had three-inch and nine-inch aerial imagery and oblique imagery that's shown here, which really helped refine some of these management units and, you know, inform the new methodology updates, along with, you know, the ever-evolving management goals and science that we were able to utilize. So, one of those, those big updates was, you know, how do we visualize, how do we map out our different forest stands, is what we used to call them, or, or, you know, timber management units from the past? And how do we update those to have a more robust idea of what's happening in each one of these units? So, we, we added a lot of attributes through our mapping and our, our update process to create these new resource management units. And then from those resource management unit delineations and attributes, we were, we were able to really hone the type of management categories we would have for each one of those. So, you know, in a, in a area that has a fish-bearing stream with, you know, a significant, the riparian streamside forest, you know, those would be highly sensitive or, you know, next to one of our prairie conservation areas versus a area that, you know, Fred Bazell planted with thousands of trees in the 70s, Douglas fir trees, that is a, a, you know, commercial thinning stand that we would, you know, manage those differently. And it was a great process to go through with our advisory board and our consultants. So, yeah, we, we have this new RNF, or Resource Management Model, to get to the sensitivity classes. Here's an example of, you know, what those final maps look like, and you can see them also in our management plan. If you look, you know, each one of these resource management units is, is, you know, tightly delineated and has a unit number assigned to them and specific plan objectives for each one of those. So, each one of these units, as I, as I alluded to, has different designations, being a range of, you know, highly sensitive, which is really no disturbance except for very specific restoration, conservation actions. When we get to, you know, a sensitive resource management unit, some of the areas where we have older forests or areas that could potentially be trending towards older forests. So, you, you know, you might have a trail running through there, but you're not going to be doing any type of, or maybe, you know, weed removal, but you're not going to be doing any type of, you know, thinning operations or entries for harvest into those areas. When we get into our three and four stands, which are really where we're going to do the majority of any, you know, active thinning operations for oak release or, you know, commercial thinnings, road building or updates could occur in these areas for, you know, year-round access. A good example of this is, you know, the north and south roads at Bazell that need to have, you know, ditch work or re-rocked for year-round access. And then we have our, you know, hardened landscapes like parking lots and buildings and that sort of thing, which we're calling the developed or development landscapes. So, you know, Trout Mountain and their crew completed, you know, hundreds of survey plots within all three of the properties to, you know, get an idea of what is the forest, you know, currently looking like, what are the age classes and size classes, you know, what is the estimated volume, all that information going into a, a model to, I understand the current and future trends of each of these resource management units. A huge component of these units that we added was really this, this idea of, you know, what is the wildlife habitat, what is the, you know, different forest, you know, diversity that we have within, within each one of these units? What, what does that really look like? Those are some of the data gaps that we're missing in the past. Updating our, our Class III and IV sites, updating, you know, what is these, you know, stocking inventories for pre-commercial and commercial thinning? And, and working with the consultants to balance out the plans and our sustainable forestry model to make sure that we are, you know, achieving that long-term mix of age class and size class without, you know, losing all these other components of habitat and, you know, wildfire prevention, older forests. On that note of wildfire prevention, given what we've learned over the last year and before that, having a very specific set of recommendations and data to inform it, you know, as we have continued encroachment around these sites, especially in the Fit and Green area, you know, looking at what is, what are the adjacent risk factors, what are the risk factors on the properties themselves, what are some actions that could be taken to hopefully reduce some of the wildfire risk? A new, a new component that had been highlighted in the past, but not a major focus, was on what the, you know, short, long-term carbon capture of these forests is. I provided data, oh, it must have been almost two years ago, at least a year and a half ago, to, to the Sustainability Coordinator for the county. But we also built on some past carbon capture models that were completed during the 2010 plan cycle and provided an analysis, the consultants looking specifically at what are the, you know, the trends for carbon capture as sequestration. And, you know, obviously, we're, we're doing a lot of that on these properties. However, based on the analysis in the plan period, there isn't really a viable market for us, given the size and location was really the driving factors. That isn't to say that there wouldn't be a possibility in the future, but there isn't any access that we could see during the plan period to any type of carbon, you know, sequestration, capture market. We looked specifically at what we called the heritage trees or trees in that 80-year-plus age class, which is really the top of the age class for our Douglas fir trees currently. Looking at, you know, where are these on the landscape? How are they doing on the landscape currently? What's the, what's the issues that they're facing in the near and long term? Given the stresses that are going on to a lot of interior coast range Douglas fir, we're seeing pretty extensive die-off in certain locations, especially the closer you get to the valley floor. So, you know, were some of these Douglas fir suited to these locations historically? Will they, you know, be able to last going forward? You know, those are the questions we're looking at when we're, we're talking about these heritage trees or heritage older forest stands. So, just to give you a highlight of some of the planned projects that we have, you know, we use an adaptive management, you know, planning schedule where, you know, we look at all of these, these inputs, all of these priorities based on the, the resource management unit and the property, you know, overarching property management goals. So, we, we factor all that in to come up with a plan for proposed projects over the 10-year period. And, you know, the, there's similarities between sites, but, but obviously, when you utilize all that data, there's certain locations and certain areas where we, we focus. That, that being said, if we have a catastrophic or, you know, natural disturbance, like another ice storm, where we have significant blowdown or loss of, you know, tree stand tops in some of these units, you know, that would shift our, our planning. But by and large, these are, you know, goals that we set, and we can always reduce or increase projects depending on what the conditions are. So, for Bazell, we're looking at, you know, over the next year, what it would take to upgrade some of the roads within our south and east units and determining how that could happen and proceed. We have ongoing priorities for some of the invasive species issues that are an ever-ongoing battle within all of the properties. So, we have to prioritize and, and focus resources where we can. 2022, we're looking at a lot of oak release on the north end and north units. And then we always have pre and post, you know, harvest, weed control and plantings as appropriate, you know, depending on, you know, the size and the amount of issues that we're facing. Fit and Green, this is our highest priority in the department for several reasons. One, we didn't, we didn't complete any entries into Fit and Green for any forest management during the last 10-year period. You know, I, I took over implementation of the plan in 2015, and there wasn't any priority placed, you know, in, in these locations because mobilization and, and resources was already going to Bazell and, and Fort Hoskins during that time. So, a lot has happened out there with, you know, Douglas fir die-off, oak release, oak issues, you know, as these Douglas, Douglas fir, you know, rapidly grow, a lot of these larger, older oak trees are, you know, overcrowded and shaded, and it's only a matter of time before we lose those, obviously. That's not something we want to see happen. So, completing oak release and pairing that with reducing some of the, the density of, of these units, especially within the south unit area bordering the Moki Forest that Greenbelt Land Trust owns, is a high priority. So, we're looking at that project for this dry season. And again, continuing the, the weed treatment in battle and some very select snag or habitat creation. This whole area, especially up into Cardwell Hill Road and our trail unit and access, you know, that's miles and miles of trails in this area that connect up to Greenbelt Land Trust and Crestmont, you know, there's extensive false broom issues and, and high density of false broom. So, we just try to keep it at bay from the prairies and make sure that we're not having any increase wherever possible. Fort Hoskins, we did extensive work, as I mentioned, in Fort Hoskins to open up this main prairie, historic prairie habitat in 2015 and 16. We've done ongoing work to eliminate some of the encroachments from hopthorn and other weeds, scotch broom within this prairie. So, just some thinning work planned at the end of the period outside of, you know, the, these prairie expansion areas that were done in the last plan, plan cycle, and then creating some, you know, additional snags, some, some additional forest floor, what we call, you know, downwood or, or large woody debris in the forest floor for habitat is really the priority out there at Fort Hoskins. So, that's really the extent of the overview I wanted to go through, and I'm happy to dive into any of the plan elements or questions that you have for me. So, you know, thanks for your, your time listening to all that. I know it's a lot.
Thank you, Adam. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And I wanted to ask a couple of questions. One, is this park GIS story map also available in an outward-facing mode, or is it just
So, this, this presentation has been on our Forest Stewardship Plan Public Outreach website for, I guess, we're going on two months plus now, so it's, it deserves to be put on.
I went to the Natural Areas and Parks website and looked, and I didn't find it. So, I, I must not have followed the right path to get there. So, I would love to know where that is, just so I can take a look at it at my leisure as well.
Yeah, I'll send it. Yeah, I'll send it right now on the, I'll send it right now on the chat.
Thank you. Some of my questions were really more about how we're looking at things in the, in the larger picture context. I think that this forest resources plan is really solid. It tends to account the latest data available in terms of imagery and the latest philosophical or theoretical approaches from best practices. And does a good job of balancing the tensions that we face in managing any forest lands these days between harvest and habitat provision and recreation, et cetera. But it's one plan that Natural Areas and Parks has and operates in the context of unit plans for each of these natural areas. And it, it doesn't include the human element. And it's an interesting thing to me because the second page of the document you shared with us, it emphasizes the whole systems approach. But us humans are probably the most, well, the biggest disturbance generator of any element when it comes to these natural ecosystems. And yet, anything that has to do with overuse or managing access or anything else is omitted from the forest resource plan. So, I, I guess my bigger question isn't about the plans themselves as they have been narrowly construed, but it's more about how the plan, this forest resource plan interacts with the rest of the management that we have to do of these natural areas, given that they are such popular recreation sites and that they exist within neighborhoods and all of those kinds of issues.
No, I, I appreciate it. I think the, the points you raise are definitely important. You know, outside of natural disturbance and, you know, unforeseen disturbance issues, you know, human use, our park users are the recreators out, out in the landscape, they definitely are, are part of the plan. I think, I don't think they were omitted. It's, it's talked about as far as, you know, where trails are occurring, where trails could occur, for example, or, you know, noting some of the issues that come along with trail access, like spreading invasive species and so on and so forth. So, I think it, it's in there. It's, it's also connected, this plan is connected and, and references our existing management plans. So, the major connection is our prairie species management plan. So, the Habitat Conservation Plan under U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. You know, it, it is complementary to that, that plan and is called out with everything that goes along with it, you know. The, the human disturbance that can occur where you have trail users going off-trail is something, you know, I think hits right on your point of, you know, managing access. So, you know, we have seen, especially over the last year and I guess going forward, an increase, a significant increase in, in usage. So, with that comes all sorts of things like people hopping off the trail, dogs running off the trail. That impacts wildlife, that impacts, you know, natural native habitat. Most of the time, that is pretty immediate proximity to the trail. You know, we don't really ever have people going way off into these units. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but it is, it is something that we take very seriously, especially when there's an operation planned, right? So, you know, with the, I can give you the example with where this interaction is occurring in, in, you know, planning for the human context and it's mentioned in the, in the plan is if we are moving forward with the wildfire prevention, removal of the dead and dying Douglas fir at Fit and Green, dealing with the wildfire risk issues at Fit and Green this summer. There's thousands of people that use that trail system from the Oak Creek parking lot all the way up to Argo Ado. And I've been in close coordination with Greenbelt Land Trust as well as they are looking at operations in their multi-forest for the exact same reason. So, you know, wide safety buffers, constant messaging and partnering on that messaging, you know, making sure that we don't put the public knowingly or unknowingly, they, they could put themselves at risk doing everything that we could, we can do to make sure that risk is reduced and we get the, you know, sustainable forestry operations completed, you know, safely and effectively. And then, you know, obviously, the end result is, you know, a higher level of stewardship for the public when they, you know, utilize and continue to enjoy these areas. So, that is, you know, an ongoing thing and an ongoing priority to continue that communication with the public. And I know in talking with Lynn, you know, working more on the social media side with the folks that we now have helping us out on that front in the department, that can only help. So, yeah, I think that's, that's my take on it right now.
Thank you. Those are all complex issues and those edge effects like the parking lots and the, the access that, that are beyond the properties that are also, of course, big challenges in terms of the human management side of the picture. There, I did pick up on one, well, thing that, that with respect to the bracharyen environments and the creeks on these properties, they're not exactly large fish-bearing systems, not exactly a high priority necessarily from the standpoint of fish passage. But I noticed that there was a call out of some culverts that needed to be addressed. And again, given my former background, I'm a supervisor for water and council. I hope that those are addressed when it is, when it makes sense to do so in partnership with, with others that have those skill sets. Commissioners Malone and Weiss, do you have questions for the discussion?
I have a couple of things, Adam. I'm really impressed with the thoroughness of the plan. Appreciate all the help and effort that went into this. One thing that I see on these three natural areas is on Fit and Green, very good connectivity with trails and the Greenbelt Land Trust. What I'm, I'm looking at is, at some point, it would be wonderful to continue from Fit and Green to Bezzel. Instead of having islands, have some connections. And I think corrugated sea trail maybe is an example of an effort that has taken decades, but is in, if not completed, is in the final stages. And so, I think the county should be opportunistic and, you know, if there's any opportunities to make connections to see what we can, see what we can do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, you know, trail use is really our main recreation that is occurring, you know, for most of the year, most of these trails are used heavily. And some of them are now getting to the point of being overused. And so, how we, you know, manage what we have existing and, you know, what we build for the future that obligates us to management, those are, those are all the key points that you raised around the, the partnership and, you know. We have, I, I think as we've restructured in the department, we have lots of conversations going forward on how we manage trails, you know, how we prioritize them going forward. It's, it's a great time to do it with the restructuring and, and the explosion that's happened in the, in the use over the last year.
Thank you. To go back, Adam, to the website for just a moment. Where on that webpage would I find a link to that, the presentation that you just walked us through? I've been over the webpage a couple of times and I'm sorry about that. I can take this answer offline, but I just can't find that connection.
Um, so... You know, I, I apologize. I guess when we, we did, I did some editing on there. It might have fallen off one of those links. It's, it's in the YouTube video there, you know, where I'm over, providing the overview, but I'll just, I'll put that link back on there. I'm, I'm sorry, I must have accidentally deleted that.
Thank you. I'm not going crazy.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay. It's a, it's a great presentation and I would really like the use of our GIS to be able to, you know, go down and find that extra information. And so, it's a wonderful resource and I'm glad that it's going to be out there and available for people.
Yeah, it was, it was on there during the, the public outreach. And then when I, when I cleaned up the site for some edits, I must have accidentally deleted that, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Nancy, do you have questions? Promise?
No questions, but I'll comment and say thank you to staff for their ongoing work on this.
You're welcome, thank you.
And I do look forward to continuing to monitor whether or not it's worthwhile participating in any kind of carbon market. I can certainly understand the fact that this is not expensive forest and that the process elements of participating can greatly outweigh the value of doing so. And that carbon is stored, whether we are participating in a market and getting compensated for it or not. So, yeah, the transaction costs are high.
Yes, we'll, we'll continue in, in the, in this planning period to see if anything changes policy-wise or, you know, something maybe, you know, northwest specific opening up.
Sounds good. Okay, if there are no further questions and no further discussions, I would welcome the motion.
Well, I'll move to adopt the Forest Resource Stewardship Plan update, twenty twenty-one, twenty thirty, and associated plans, addendum and direct county natural areas, parks, date to begin plan implementation.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussions? Okay, all in papers, suit and abide with the night. I, I, okay, this passes unanimously. Adam, thank you. And now you can hit those RFPs out the door and see if we can get contractors lined up for the work season. I know that that's a, a not, a minor task in and of itself.
No, I appreciate it. And, yeah, I think we're on a great path forward for, you know, making sure that we continue the, the best public stewardship possible of the, of the, the areas that are covered. So, thanks to the board and hope you have a good rest of the day.
Thank you, and you as well. Lynn, are there any comments you'd like to make as the new director of Nate with respect to the process and the plan moving forward?
I just wanted to thank the commissioners for supporting us and moving forward in implementation and, and to acknowledge Adam and all his hard work this last year to push this through. I'm coming in and did pale in, but I've seen how hard he's worked this last year in a very difficult year, going through public engagement during COVID was not an easy task. So, and he's had a great relationship with Trout Mountain. That has really helped push things forward. And the park board's been very supportive, especially David Smith. He came out and provided a lot of advice as well. So, anyway, just kudos to everyone who helped us through this last year. Our department gets this pushed through and, and ready to implement and we're excited to move forward.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, everyone. With that, we are finished with our morning's business, not morning's business. We are finished with the work session business. And I would propose that we take a five-minute break. Okay, we will see you back here at ten forty-seven.
Well, if I just press the unmute, it should work, right?
Tested the whole thing.
Yeah. Just test it. There you go.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a... Hey, can you all hear me?
I can hear you, man.
Okay, well, we're testing the equipment here because neither John Avine or I are proficient on this polycom. But, sorry, John Avine, I didn't mean to drag you into the technological muck.
Okay. Nancy, are you with us? Let's wait just another couple of minutes and see if Nancy can rejoin us, and then we'll begin. Okay. Now that we are assembled, our recess is over, and we will rebegin at 10:51 a.m. with our business meeting. And item five is our consent calendar. It contains approval of the January 26, 2024 meeting minutes. Have you had a chance to review them, and are there any changes? Or do I have a motion?
Move to approve our safety consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. We will move on to new business. And the first item is in the matter of appointing Carla Jones as acting executive director of the community health centers. And I believe we have several people joining us for that, including Tom King, the current health center director, and Janice Cook, the board chair for the community health centers board. Janice, are you taking the lead?
I am. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, as you know, there is a change coming up, and our board, we met in executive session last night, and we approved Carla Jones as the interim director. And I'm not sure how much more information you might need or want.
Thank you.
Did you... I just want to clarify, you didn't make a decision in executive session, did you?
We did make a, not an executive session, though. It was for, I mean, as far as all the board members? Yes.
So, I'm still not clear. Did you approve the decision to make the appointment in executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Were you... We're going to need to chat offline. Yes?
Anthony, can I just interject real quick? Janice, a further clarification, was it the executive board that met last night? And that's who met in executive session, or was the entire board?
It was the entire board, missing a couple of people, but we all made that decision.
So, Vance, how does that alter any action the board would take today?
Janice, you and I should chat offline, but it doesn't make any difference for the board of commissioner's decision today.
The question, Janice, is about making a decision within executive session or not. If you met in executive session to discuss this matter, then made the decision after you declared the executive session over in regular session, that's fine. But if making a decision within executive session is counter to Oregon law. So, that's the issue that we're grappling with.
I was not aware of that. Thank you.
So, yeah, I just want to clarify. So, the board's request today is entirely independent of how the CHC board got here. Janice, I didn't want to say it upfront, but we're not permitted under Oregon law to make decisions. Any public body is not allowed to make decisions within the executive session. You can discuss things, but in order to make an actual decision, the board needs to come out of exec session and into a regular session to make a decision. So, that's...
So, we had our secretary take notes for us, so that doesn't...
Not...
Not sure how that works there.
Not quite there. Like I said, the key point to remember is the board can't make a decision within an executive session. You can adjourn, you can recess and come out and make your decision, but you just can't make a decision in executive session. So, I would ask that next time you get, next board meeting, you ratify the decision that was made at yesterday's board meeting in your regular session. That way, you'll...
So, we are... We aren't going to have a regular session until next month, but we were going to have another session, a board member session. We're trying to schedule one for this week. Would that be appropriate?
Yep. Yep. It doesn't matter when, just your next meeting, just ratify the decision that you made in open session.
Yeah. No problem. Gotcha. Thank you.
In light of the community health centers board recommendation to appoint Carla Jones as the interim executive director for the community health centers of Benton, Benton County, Benton, Loom County, I would entertain a motion to affirm the CHC board's recommendation.
I could say I have a question for Vance. Does this board still use the term affirm?
Again, I think you're okay using the term affirm, simply because the CHC board is going to come back and ratify its decision in open session. So, it has made a decision. It's not technically within the proper form, but that will be cured.
Well, then, I will move to affirm the CHC board executive committee's decision to appoint Carla Jones as the interim CHC director.
Is there any further discussion on the matter? All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And Janice, sorry about that. We clearly have a little bit of board work to do, so get things all straightened out. And I'm looking forward to working with the clinic board and through our liaison, Nancy Wise, to make further decisions as we move forward in this regard. And Tracy is with us, as you know, now as well, from the HR perspective, to look for an exception to our personnel rule that's the recruitment policy in order to expedite potential process of filling this vacancy. So, Tracy.
Morning, commissioners. I think what I'd like to do is to set this up from a policy perspective and a HR perspective, and then Janice can fill in some of the blanks from the CHC board director perspective. But the purpose in coming here today is to ask you for an exception that would extend the eligible list for recruitment that was started last May for the community health center director. Under our current policy, we have the ability to extend the three-month list by an additional three months, and the HR director is the position that can provide authority for that exception. Given that we're ten months beyond that date, we're requesting you to approve an exception in policy that would extend the list until April 30 of 2021. And this gives the board of directors, the health board of directors, the option to look back into the previous pool to see if there's a suitable candidate there. And the reason for this is that it has the potential to shorten the length of time to fill this position without a qualified candidate. There are a couple of factors that the board would like you to consider in approving this recommendation. The short tenure of the current CHC director, who's been in the position for 10 months. As you know, we've had a lot of difficulty in filling, attracting and filling these positions while the pandemic has been going on. And then also the recency of the CHC director eligible list. And so, Janice, I just wondering if you would like to add anything from the board's perspective?
Just that we would like to, and I don't know if names are appropriate here, so there's a candidate that was the runner-up that was highly qualified and that we're interested in reevaluating. And then if we can do that, that would be, if, great. And if not, then we'll have to start doing a new search. I'd probably want to do a limited search, though, for the Washington, Oregon, and maybe Northern California.
Okay. Tracy, you're kind of...
Happy to answer your questions, you're welcome.
Okay. Are there questions from the commissioners?
Just a comment that this makes good sense, and to, anything to speed up the process, I think is worthwhile. Just in the packet, it says this rule is 6.2, and the agenda says 6.3. I would assume that we're dealing with 6.2. Thank you.
Sharp ayes. Thank you. Catching that? Any other comments or questions?
I had a couple of questions, probably relating to the pool and everything, and maybe I can talk, should I talk with Tracy about it later, or Joe, or somebody?
Janice, I would suggest talking with Tracy directly. She typically handles those items for us, so within our county departments.
Okay. And then as far as if we do pick from the pool, I also was thinking, you know, to guarantee that we have somebody in that spot for a while. Is there a way of working a contract to have a guarantee such as that?
Once again, that's a discussion I would have with Tracy and include Vance as well. And Tracy can coordinate that.
All right. Thank you.
That discussion.
We're with you, Janice, in terms of wanting to ensure some stability for the community health centers. And we know that it's been a very tough time to recruit in this field right now. And I think personally that if we can work together as board commissioners and as the community health centers board to clarify roles and responsibilities and authority between the boards and between the executive director of the clinic and the public health, not public health director, the health department director, that will help us recruit as well. I think it's the fact that there's uncertainty there has made it harder for people to thrive in those roles, and we need to address that if we're going to make the next folks that occupy those roles successful. So, I look forward to that partnership, working with the clinic board to get there.
I appreciate that. I know that we, as board members too, are looking at how we support the next, the interim and the next person in a different way. And I feel like having more people involved from the board is appropriate and helpful so that it's not just somebody and then losing that training ability and that ability, so putting it down on paper and having steps to follow through is appropriate.
And perhaps one of the things that we could consider is having another joint board meeting at some point in the not-too-distant future as well, between the clinic board and the board of commissioners. Thank you. And I would happily entertain a motion on the side. Thank you, and I would happily entertain a motion on the side.
I'll move to approve the community health center's board's request to extend the eligible list for the community health center director to April 30, 2021.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you very much, Janice, for this effort that you and your board are putting into this as we move forward to ensure the success of all of our operations through the community health centers.
And thank you Commissioners and everybody for listening and being there for us. Take care.
Okay. Bye. Okay, that moves us on to old business. And the first item of old business is in the matter of second reading, amending Chapter 23 of the Benton County Development Code for Solid Waste, ordinance number 221-0300. And we have with us Daniel and Vance for this.
Good morning Commissioners. Thanks for listening to this. We did the first reading of the ordinance on March 2nd, and the ordinance and the Chapter 23 amendments are designed to essentially reflect the shift from the, of the solid waste program from the health department to the community development department. Updates to the solid waste advisory council's membership requirement, updated work choice for gender neutrality, and updates to the use of fees collected under the landfill franchise agreement. And I was going to turn it over to Greg, Brett, or Vance Carone for any other comments on that.
And I have none.
And I have none. This is, we're now into the second reading portion, so it's pretty routine right now.
Okay, any comments from the Commissioners? Happy to move this forward. Do I have a motion?
I move to conduct the second reading of ordinance 2021, days 0300, amending Chapter 23 of Benton County Code.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye? Okay, thank you. Do we need to read it, Vance?
Yes ma'am. Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Before the Benton, before the Board of County Commissioners for the state of Oregon for the county of Benton, in the matter of amending Benton County Code, Chapter 23, Solid Waste Management Ordinance, number 2021-0300. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows. Short title, Amending Benton County Code, Chapter 23, Solid Waste Management. Pursuant to our charter, following the second reading, this ordinance and the changes to Chapter 23 will take effect 30 days from today, which is April 15, text date.
Thank you. And thank you for that very expedient item and all of your work that led us to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We now have two routine items, approval of April 2nd, 2019, with session minutes and approval of April 2nd, 2019, board meeting minutes. And I would happily entertain approval of those two sessions minutes as one motion.
I'll move to approve the April 2nd, 2019 work session and board meeting minutes.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. And like the record shows, Nancy Wise was staying as she was not present in her Commissioner role at that time. Thank you. Moving on to departmental requests and reports. The first, well, the next three items are all public works. Michael Johnson and Laurel Byer to present some discussion of decisions regarding weight limits.
Good morning Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes indeed. Good morning.
You never know with a mask, and I am in the emergency operations center, so sorry if there's any background noise going on. So I just wanted to set up these three items for you. This is similar to what you've seen in the past with some of these bridge restrictions that we're now getting down from the state. They're going back through and looking at these special hauling vehicles and reassessing all the bridges. They've been mandated to do that from FHWA. And so for the most part, this is just another sign that's going up that is basically bringing attention to those special hauling vehicles. Hey, these are the limits that you have for going across these bridges. So it doesn't really impact normal use over these bridges, except for McCarland Road Bridge, which is actually one that we've applied to the state for funding on the local agency bridge program for grant funding for the 2025 through 2027 year fiscal year timeframe. So we aren't, we have not heard back yet on that grant application. They're still reviewing them, and so they're still in process. But we do expect to hear something probably later this year on that particular piece. But if you have any specific technical question, Mike Johnson is on the line and can help present those. Pat, yes, Commissioner alone?
Yeah, you used the term special hauling vehicles. Does that have something to do with, or is it example like a dump truck with five or six axles and instead of 80,000 pound limit, there are 105 or something that has there?
Yeah, exactly. And we don't see too many of those through the county, but it's also surprising when you start looking, like, wait a minute, that garbage truck has one extra, you know, tire. What's going on there? So they're creeping in, and I think they'll be something more common because you can get heavier loads on them through the system. And I do believe, I wanted to mention too, that Joe Kirby, myself and Gary are working on setting up a work session item for you all, so we can go into more detail on the special hauling vehicles, as well as some of the requirements that are coming up for fire engines, emergency vehicles.
I think that we're getting to that point where it's getting serious, when even the Van Gere and Gris thing of load listed at a pretty tight level and can't pass fire trucks, fire engines, or buses.
Or buses, yeah, exactly.
So we are in the crunch, so that would be a good thing. Are there any questions for Laurel regarding these matters? The Ingram Slough County Bridge, the Steamboat Channel County Bridge, or the McCarland Bridge?
A general question is the idea with all the axles on roads that the load is spread properly, but when it comes to bridges, that they can really impact, because they can be relatively short and, but more weight than the bridge ever bought.
Right. Yeah, they're definitely more compact, so they're not as long vehicles. And so even though they may have eight axles, they put all the weight on the bridge at once versus the longer semi-trucks are, they're able to distribute the load and the bridge only sees a portion of the load at one time as it's crossing. And so now it's just, it's just all on the bridge.
Thank you.
Makes for complicated signs, I mean, I have to say, looking through the packet.
Yeah, we have actually tried to make them simpler because they're very, I can't imagine, how do you read them as you're driving by? So we've tried to make them slightly simpler than what ODOT, they're still in line with what ODOT requires, but they have less pictures on there, so they're easier to interpret as you're driving past them.
And I also understand that there are signage in advance in both directions, so there is warning, and it's not just the one sign right as you get to the bridge, which is also very helpful.
Right. We try to post as advance warning someplace where a truck could turn around. So yeah, that way they have that opportunity to avoid the bridge.
Yeah. I have all kinds of images in my mind of what could happen. Okay, as I understand it, we need to take these one at a time, but if there are further questions, I'd be happy to entertain that series of motions.
Okay. I'll move to adopt the order authorizing the weight limit posting on East Ingram Island Road Bridge over Ingram Slough County Bridge, number 45141-09.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye?
Thank you. That is approved, and then we'll move on to 8.2, Steamboat Channel. I can't hear you, Pat.
Well, that's because my mic was off. Just stuck in here.
That's pretty good.
Okay, I move to adopt the order authorizing the weight limit posting on Bundy Road Bridge over Steamboat Channel County Bridge, number 45007-10.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will move on to 8.3, similar decision with respect to McCarland Road Bridge.
I want to write out. I'm looking at the order authorizing weight limit posting on McCarland Road Bridge over Muddy Creek County Bridge, number 45500-53.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Okay, thank you. And thank you Laurel, and to Mike as well for the work on these bridges, and look forward to a fuller discussion of our bridge situation and a work session in the future.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you Commissioners.
Moving on, we have a public hearing in the matter of renaming Southwest Wattenpaw Avenue to Southwest Wattenpaw Avenue. And while that doesn't sound like much, the name of Wattenpaw Avenue has been misspelled for many years. It included two Ts where it has, the family name in fact is only one T. And this is a bit of a special moment because the person that initially requested this is a resident of the area, said it's Wattenpaw family, Frances Croft, and she is turning 100 this day. And George McAdam, our former county employee with National Area Department, undertook the process, working with Joe Martis, to bring this to us so that the name could be corrected on for 100th birthday. And I don't see Joe here.
I'm probably not up, my camera is not working well. But can you hear me?
Okay. We can hear you loud and clear. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, let me see if I can check this thing. No, it's not going to work. Okay. You were right, Mr. George McAdam had contacted me, and I gave him some petitions to take them around the residence on Wattenpaw, which has two Ts now. Frances Croft, that's her name. I was not to be able to talk with her, but George said, yes, today would be her birthday, and she would really love it to hang the name to, to have a nice birthday present. The process is that, with the petition, I got over two of the three households, one actually household doesn't actually live there all the time, so, and also I sent notices to everyone who abuts the road but don't have residences along the road. So that happens a lot of the time. But I met the threshold of over 50% of the people that do have residences along the road. The road was created in 1964, and of course, it was unnamed after Frank Wattenpaw, which is actually Frances Croft's brother. And he had passed away. Of course, they'd moved away a long time ago, and the people living there, of course, didn't know what the, you know, the actual name should be. The county had accepted the, this road name with two Ts in it, and of course, that's an official road list. So our process is actually to contact the people out there to let them know that, of course, they might just be chasing their checkbooks and their online identifications and their letters and everything like that. So I have to give them a chance to actually petition for the name to change, and so everybody's on board with it. It sounds like all the people are okay with the name change. So this is, actually, we changed the road sign once in the interim, but nobody, I guess, where the Wattenpaws never went by the road, because we changed the name and still had the two Ts in it. We probably could have done it then, but we have a process to do this, and so everybody's fine with the road name change.
Is there any discussion? Nancy?
I have a question. I mean, it sounds like we're following our procedures on this. I was just curious if anyone submitted, like, proof that that was actually how it was spelled? Not that I don't believe them, of course, I'm just curious.
Well, what I did, since I'm a surveyor, I went to their deed, because the Wattenpaws actually owned this land. They created that, all the parcels out there originally. And in the deed, it's all one T. So I actually checked on that. I kind of do a lot of detailed work, and that's for sure. And Frances, of course, backed it up, but definitely the deeds show one T.
So Vance, in terms of process, what is our next step?
Next step is to ask if there's any public comment. So this is, remember, this is a public hearing.
Yes, indeed. Is there any public comment about this matter? I hear no public comment.
So now you can bring it back to the board for deliberation and vote, if you so choose.
Is there any further deliberation on this matter? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Well, thank you, Joe, for your efforts, and I'll move to approve the order for renaming Southwest Wattenpaw with two Ts Avenue to Southwest Wattenpaw with one T Avenue Public Road, number P 25401, or 01.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Thank you very much.
I want to interject that, because I will contact George so he can contact Frances, so she knows right away today, so we won't get the road sign up right away, but I just wanted to know that it's been. but I just wanted to know that had been approved.
Thank you, Joe, that's fantastic. This is such good timing. Wonderful 100th birthday present.
And it was a unanimous decision, Joe.
Thank you.
Vance, in this case, do we need to read any of that language?
Nope.
No? Okay. I, that's where I need a little bit of a drill in terms of where, what needs read and what doesn't. For another session. Okay, that concludes our regular business for today's meeting. We are going into executive session to address real estate issues. And Vance, that is under ORS.
192.660 subsection 2, subsection E, as in Edward, that's a small E, John.
Okay. So we need to make sure that we have all off the line that are not to be in executive session with us.